Welcome, everybody, to Zone Board meeting. August 21st. My name is Marty Yeats, and I'm the chairman. To my left, the vice chair, Mr. Pobias. Board members, Ms. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Kimmel, and Mr. Ray Dell. To my right, our clerk, Ms. Murphy. The head of inspectional services, Mr. Duker, is around here somewhere. He's in a meeting now, doctor. If you have a cell phone or a pager, could you put on, vibrate or silent, please? So you don't want to interrupt the meeting. If anyone wants to speak, please go outside. It's hot enough to hear him here as it is. If anyone's going to testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand? If anyone thinks they might testify? If you think you might testify, anybody? Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the future, so help you God?
Yes.
Motion to waive minutes of August 7th.
Mr. Chairman. Motion to waive the minutes of August 7th.
Second.
On motion, stand down, all favor. I oppose them all. I have a letter here. Counselor wanted to move 42 Mill Street. They're looking for September 11th. Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on number Z-18-47. Send into Mill Street LLC for a special private variance of the malishy existing structure and erecting each townhouse residences on the premises number 42 Mill Street. I make a motion to move the hearing to September 11th.
Second.
On a motion, stand down, all favor. I oppose them all. Under old business case, Z-18-40. Now, we'll put this off so we can have a meeting, and then we put it off last meeting so we could be here this meeting. Is there anyone here from 308 C Street? What we did is we got a text, the commissioner did, 30 minutes ago. And he asked if he could continue it again. He wants to change the project because the neighborhood's not happy. But I'm not going to allow that. He had his chance to come here tonight. He had a chance to write a letter, and he waited till last minute. So with that, Mr. Vice Chairman, I like a motion to deny it.
With the chairman, I'm on number Z-18-40. Bad, punk, fool, peruso, the text for a variance is subdivided a lot, two lots of the stuff is same family home and a new trade lot of persons number 308 C Street. I make a motion to deny the variance.
Second.
Right of motion? Stand down, all favor. Oppose them all. Under new business, case number Z-18-53, Janice Hoffman for an appeal. Counselor, uh, what's Hawthorne?
Should all of the 308 people go that?
Anyone from 308 that's here that the case has been denied? If they want to build something, have to come back. It has to be a different project, or they have to wait two years.
Thank you.
I'm Sean Foreman. I have a office at one Boston Place in Boston. I represent James C. Hoffman. Ms. Hoffman lives at 1 Ford on Babcock Street. She has been out there since 2001. We are appealing a declaration to act on the part of ISD. ISD viewed this as a property dispute, which I totally understand. But I think that, in fact, this is a pretty clear zoning violation. What you have here is a shed was erected pursuant to the shed part of the ordinance.
Excuse me. Someone, please, close that door out there. Thank you.
And just, you know, quite simply, the shed was not put on the same lot as the principal structure to which the shed is accessory. We're just asking that the, that the zoning board instruct ISD to have the shed moved onto the lot, which is the same lot as the principal structure to which it is accessory, and in a way that complies with the side yard and rear yard setbacks, which are six feet. And I'm not going to take a lot of time, because I really think it's that clear cut. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to engage. I do have plenty of materials.
No. In fact, I looked into this lot, and I've been at that lot, and I went up and spoke to Mr. Duker when they were going to put a shed on that lot. What I was told is, the city has never accepted that part of the street. So they don't maintain it, they don't take care of it. The two people take care of that piece of the street. They maintain it. So he made his decision, I guess, when you went to him, and now we have to make our decision. I have no question, because, as far as I'm concerned, the city didn't accept the street. And that's up to the two people. If they want to see if they can buy that property and split the property. The counselor, if the counselor wants to say something on this, I've had him up to say a few words. But people would look into this. And I understand. One second, Counselor. Does anyone have any questions?
I'd like to know why you didn't include a survey in your packages, so that we could actually see what's where. I mean, it would seem to me that if we had, if I had a survey with a plot plan, I could determine.
So I have a, I have the accessory map that you have marked up. If you want to take a look at that, I can show that to you. I've got, it's actually pretty helpful. It just shows the, shows the location of the two properties. It shows the location of the shed. I'm happy to lead that with the clerk.
I wish I had had this before review of the properties, so I would have known what I'm looking at. As far as the paper street is concerned, I hope the city's not accepted it, and it reverts to the owners.
Well, so if I could be current on that for a second, you know, again, I understand ISD viewed this as a property law dispute, but the zoning bylaw, or excuse me, ordinance is very clear, that an accessory structure has to be on the same lot as the principal structure. And so, and the way that Quincy defines lot is with reference to the street line. It's, for my notes, section 10. A lot is a contiguous parcel of land, identical ownership throughout, bounded by other lots or streets. You look at the definition of street line, it's the boundary line of a lot, separating it from a public street or private way. So there's really, I mean, there's no question that this is a, there is a lot. It is a 155 Babcock.
What are you saying, a public street? It's not. I mean, they haven't accepted that as a street. So your argument is a public street.
So, so if you, again, if you, if you want to approach this from a different way, you look at the deed. This is a 50-foot by 90-foot.
Counselor, I'll tell you what. You put on your case, okay? Put on your case. That's all I'm telling. You put on your case.
Thank you. So this is a 50-foot by 90-foot lot. The shed was erected outside the 50-foot by 90-foot boundary. The Quincy zoning ordinance mandates that an accessory structure is placed on the same lot as the principal structure. This is a case that just, it screams out for enforcement. You cannot allow people to hook up structures, accessory structures on parcels of land that are not their principal lot. That would be anarchy. I don't, I mean, I don't really know what else to say. I think it would be a disservice to get bogged down in the property rights issues, the easement, whether it's a public way or a private way, or just an easement. But the fact is that it's not the lot, and that is the only issue. That is why enforcement is required by the ordinance.
Again, I need clarification. What you're telling me is the lot is 50-foot wide and 50-foot wide, and in between, that's a separate lot. That's what you're telling me.
In between the, in between 155 and 149 is a 30-foot right-of-way.
A right-of-way is not a lot.
It is a, that is exactly, I think you're exactly right. The right-of-way is not a lot.
That's correct.
And they have put the shed in the right-of-way, which is not a lot. It is not their lot, and it is not the lot where the principal structure is.
Generally, a right-of-way grants to the abutis. It's granted by the abutis, and the property line is in the middle of the right-of-way.
Well, the fee ownership is in the middle. And, you know, this has actually surprisingly, this has only come up a couple of times in the reported cases, but there's actually a pretty good case from the land court that says, look, if you have a paper street, you know, a street that hasn't been built out, and you've got somebody who wants to use the midline of that, of that paper street as where you're going to maneuver from the setback, because, you know, you technically own to the midline. The land court says, look, you can't do that unless you've first proven that no one else has rights in that, in that way. And there's actually a pretty good quote. They're talking about the derelict fee statute, which I think is what you're referencing. That's what gives people ownership to the midline. And actually, this is the appeals court. The appeals court says, the derelict fee statute, applying the derelict fee statute to zoning bylaws is inconsistent with the text of the statute. Section 58 enumerates a variety of fee interests, ways, water courses, and monuments upon which no construction can occur. Plainly, the fee interest to which section 58 entitles a grantee does not include the right to build. And that is a 2009 case from the appeals court, which I'm happy to lead.
Isn't that building and foundation? Isn't that what you're talking about? Building, foundation?
Well, the language they used is construction.
Construction. Right.
But again, I think that the, you know, this may be an interesting property rights case, but it's also a zoning violation. You have a, you have an ordinance that says, you're allowed to put up an accessory shed, but it has to be on the same lot as your principal structure. And this is not. It's not on the same lot.
Why are you going to question? Does either, does either your client or at 155 pay taxes on either of this private way?
My client does not. The assessors' records for 155, they assess it as just 50 by 90, so they're not including the extra square footage that you would expect if the, if the, you know, half the right-of-way was included.
Included.
And again, you know, the reason we're here is because the way is, in fact, used. It's used by my client to access a garage. The shed materially interferes with that. I mean, we wouldn't be here if there weren't a material interference.
What interferes with that?
The location of the shed.
No, frankly, it doesn't. I've been there three times. It does not interfere with that shed. You can drive into that shed if you want, I mean, into her piece of property, right in front of the shed.
It takes the way, it turned around with the design and built for that.
So, I mean, to that point, there is, there is, I think, perhaps, we can disagree on the opinion.
I know, I know. We do disagree, because the city has never accepted the street. That's why, personally, I can't see your argument. Understand your argument, but I can't see it.
I couldn't drink my coffee.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Please, address the board, address your lawyer, and he'll do it for you. If you want to speak, you'll have your chance.
Okay, again, my client is Ms. Hoffman in the back. If there's nothing else, I'm going to step aside.
Any other questions? Anyone?
No.
Chairman, I appreciate the time.
I just have a question.
All right.
My name is John Pocken. Would it be beneficial for you to see the drawing?
Address.
Oh, I look at 100 Milewood Road in 14. Your question about seeing, would it be beneficial for you to see the drawing, what we're talking about?
There's bigger issues, which are all. If we saw the drawing and we saw the original plan that laid it out, it probably would have given us some indications. But there's different rules. There's acceptance of paper street by the city, which it hasn't been done. There's the idea of a lot line, and if there's easements, grant it over the, over the paper street. There's a couple of three issues that are involved in there. It's just not clear, it's just not clearly, this is one lot, this is another lot. They're saying it's, it's not assessed, it's different, yet the city never accepted. We have that in a lot of arguments.
Can you show me the map of the assessors' office?
He answered your question, sir. Did you?
The assessors' office, the assessors' plans are not legal. That's, that's why we ask for surveys when we do work.
If we could assume for the moment that the center line of that paper street is true, it still is on the opposite side of the center line, is approaching on her.
Again, I need a survey. We need a stamped plan to see that. But again, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't seem relevant. And to me, in this case, of the argument, it seems different from what the argument is.
And the basis of the argument is to have a setback from the lot line, not even from the center line of the.
Well, again, that's, that's what the discussion is, based on what's there and what isn't there, and what's, what's on the ground.
You have something to say? No. Counselor, here. Thank you, dear.
Good evening. David McCarthy, 48 Whitney Road, Ward 1, Counselor. In this particular case, I spoke to both of the parties involved, Ms. Hoffman and Mr. Davis, about that it is an unaccepted piece of land, Oswego, at some point, is the crossover street that went down to Stoughton. It never happened, and it wasn't accepted by the city. I went back to Mr. Duker and the city numerous times, and I know that at least one of them, and I think both of them, also did some due diligence in regards to confirming that it was an unaccepted street. I then went to the Register of Deeds, Bill O'Donnell, and had him dig, put together a package that I probably don't have in front of you, that the, both parties have, and explained exactly what you were saying about the abutis with an unaccepted street in regards to splitting it down in the middle, and, and basically taking care of it, which has been the case. I know with the Davises in regards to mowing it and maintaining it. The shed that goes in there, and I went down numerous times to take a look, it looked like it did not impede any of the entrance into the garage. I'm not sure on the surveying if it's exactly where it is, but it seems like it's not a deterrent at all. It's a shed, as the chairman had mentioned, it's not got a foundation, it's not a fixed structure. I'd love you folks to get a copy, which pretty much fortifies that the shed should stay where it is, from the Register of Deeds. Mr. O'Donnell went and detailed for me personally on this case, because we wanted to make sure that we didn't have something popped up and said it wasn't an unaccepted piece of land in the city of Quincy and say, oh, we found something. But, but it is an unacceptable, and I think it's been done properly. You should get a copy of that, just for the record. But I think it's properly where it is, and I'm supporting where the shed is now in regards to 155. I don't think it blocks or interferes with anybody in the abutting house, and I think there's plenty of room there. And again, that, when it's an unaccepted street, it's been like that for a number of years. It's all brass, it's not asphalt at all. It's been like that for a long time, and I think it's laid out correctly now. And I'll make sure you do get the Register of Deeds package that outlines the, the unaccepted street policy in regards to how they handle that with the abutis. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Our job here is, good job making decisions on the appeal. Why wouldn't it? It's neither of these reasons. I'm going to give the opinion, as a matter of fact. So it's.
So my job is to take care of it again?
Your job is to either uphold his appeal or have the shed moved, or, oh, no, you're not going to appeal with them, deny it, deny the appeal, Mr. Duker made the right decision, not your call. May I re-bote and Mr. Duker made the right call?
Can I ask a question?
The street, yeah, sure. The street is not accepted by the city.
I know that it's not required to pull a permit. Was there a permit pulled in this case? Was there, was it, before the structure was put there, was there any notification? Was there anything done, or was it?
Mr. Duker, we have no permits on file, but no permit necessary for the shed.
Yeah, yeah. I, but I know some situations, people pull them for situations where they don't necessarily know, so.
Sure. Interesting. Any other?
Might have been helpful if they had a survey, if they're trying to convince this board that this shed was, in fact, eating over a 15-foot line. None of it was included.
I mean, I've heard it three times. When I say it's right on the line, yeah, I think it's right in the middle. And I, and I think both people use paper streets where we live in Housneck. That's what they do. Do they build houses? Do they build accessory structures that are permanent? No. But you use the land. No? Can that shed be moved in 20 minutes? Of course it could. But it's like we're always a mover. I mean, it's not, whatever way you vote, you may got a mover or you're dead. So you need to vote with Mr. Duker, or you uphold the appeal. I'm going to vote with Mr. Duker, think he made the right call, because the street was never, ever accepted by the city. That means it's up to the two landowners to figure it out. Those who don't, won't get by anyway. I don't know why they don't buy it. The city, let the city get the taxes, but it's never going to be used, and it's never taken care of.
I'm great that we let this stand, that using the logic that we're using, that we, Ms. Hoffman, could not build a shed that's going to be very close to their property. If we don't know, if the question is, we don't know if it's in the middle, there's still a setback issue that has to be dealt with. Is it, is it on the line? Is that, are we going to accept that being on the line? And could she?
No. What I'm accepting, what I'm accepting is, is Mr. Duker made a decision not to make a decision on that, because the paper street is not being used.
It's to the chair.
No. You're out of line right now. Thank you. So it's up to us to make our decision, whatever it is. uphold the appeal or not uphold it.
There's no evidence.
No.
Mr. Chair, right now it's ignored.
I know you have. Well, I think, I think it's, I mean, uphold the appeal or you're not. Yeah. And it doesn't matter what anyone's opinion is in this room. It's not going to change it. What's going to change? Anyone's been to the property. Either, either Mr. Duker, you tell him to make a decision, or you tell him his decision that he didn't make a decision, it's all right. That's our job.
I agree.
Is he here to allow Mr. to speak? No.
If Mr. Duker made the decision based on the information that the best available information he had, not because of the state.
Correct.
So I have to stand by his decision at this time, because there's not enough evidence here for me to remove it. It's sketchy at the, at the least. The information's sketchy, and I don't know where it is. I'm listening to people say it's in the town, it's on the back and front of the, so I'm going to, I'm going to back Mr. Duker on that.
When you went down there and saw the property and you looked where the shed was, and you saw the paper street, you saw the two properties, and you roughly go over, like her shed, her, her, her garage is, that street, take 30 feet in the middle of that, right from the middle of the street, 15 inches out. Take the middle of that street and look down.
I thought it would be difficult for her to swig it down. I go on, so.
I don't think no one's ever had.
I understand it's a personal privilege, just, just to allow a couple of people to just be allowed to testify, or just to comment on the situation.
For what reason, Counselor? For what reason?
I'd just like to hear their views, to see if there's anything that we're missing here tonight. I don't think we're missing anything. I don't think, I think we all understand.
In what capacity are they speaking? I mean, are they speaking as a resident? Are they speaking as?
Well, I think you're going to have them come up and just give their addresses and see if they're a neighbor. I'm not sure where they all live.
But I'm just saying.
You might have someone on the other side.
An opinion doesn't matter enough. An opinion.
But I, I'd just like to allow just a personal privilege for them to just give their opinion. And then, you know, you can make your decision.
Counselor, I really, I really think, I think you're making a can of worms out of something, because you're going to end up with 50 different views in this room. Here's what you're going to end up. Marty Gordon's been on the board before. I'll let Marty speak, if you don't mind. Marty, go ahead. To Gordon.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like to express my advices on the board as well.
Yeah.
For the record, my name is Mark McForten. I reside at 315 Rock Island Road. Before I married, I resided at 149 Babcock Street. So I can speak to this issue personally. Number one, there is a precedent for action by the building department. In approximately 1969, here, take a year or two, when the house at 155 was constructed, the contractor decided to make, and you will notice if you drove by, that there is a single car driveway to the right-hand side of the house. He made that a two-side, a two-car driveway. He impinged on what is known as Oswego Street. The building department told him, no, take it down. You cannot build on Oswego Street. Precedent. Number two, there was a request by three of the neighbors to, in essence, abandon Oswego Street, as been said by the, the board, basically divvy up the street, half and half to the affrontage. Okay? I represented my father, went to the planning department, spoke to them about it, and if you check the assessors' plan, and that's the only piece of evidence there is, the southern half, the Stoughton Street end of Oswego Street, was abandoned, was taken by the two neighbors. However, it was a, roughly a 15-foot piece south of the two lots in question that remained in limbo, as it were, as part of what is known as Oswego Street. The intent there was to afford my father and mother, who owned the property, the ability to get in and out of the garage, which is right at the corner of the lot pre-existing nonconforming. My father used to rent that space for the storage of boats, 20-footers, whatever, and needed the full width of the area called Oswego Street to maneuver the boats in and out. That's why that piece stayed the way it was, and that's the way it ended up. All of a sudden, now you've got the structure there, it's still just a chunk of land that the city did not accept. There is drainage from the other side of Oswego Street in Babcock Street that goes through this property, but there is no easement. It's just one of those things that happened back in the day.
Is that a pipe or just?
A pipe.
Because a pipe.
That just dumped out, and ultimately, I think, it was collected and brought into the Stoughton Street drainage system. But one way or the other, it was just put in, because that's the way things happened 75 years ago. Bottom line is that the intent and the acceptance by my parents, who were the landowners at the time, was that that piece was just going to stay. There was no request to the city to accept it. There was no request to the city to improve it. Nothing like that, just leave it be. And that's the way it remained until a couple of years ago. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Good to see you, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Jim McCarthy. I live on 9 Babcock Street. Lived on that street for just under 50 years, and in that time, I've seen easements and right-of-ways evaporate with neighbors building things on these properties. One thing as a member of the community that always bothers me, is at a community meeting, somebody says, hey, you're not from here, sit down and shut up. And it's frustrating, that Housneck does seem to be the wild, wild west, and Jay Duker seems to have to be the one that has to sort it out. But I'm certainly not in favor of building on an easement anywhere in the city, but in this case, I think it violates. I use that garage every couple of years to park my boat, and with that shed there, I can't get my trailer in there, that's for sure. So to your point, my truck is a 22-foot Silverado, and boat's probably another 16 feet, so it's not easy access. So I don't think it's right. So I don't think it's right. We are the wild west down there sometimes, but I don't think it is right and I don't think we should allow it. So I just wanna thank you for your time.
You park in the garage, Mr. McCarthy?
Can't fit in the garage, but if you get a boat trailer in there.
Hello. I'm Judy Honkanen. I live at 150 Babcock Street, right across the street. And I've lived there a long time. That street has been open to kids sledding, having fun over there, having a good time. The new neighbor that moved in there complains about that. Complaints about everything on that. My husband parked his boat on the street in front of there for one day. She called the cops saying it was her property. It's not her property. It's an open street. Where the shed is, in my opinion, is not a problem. People talking about moving boats in there. If somebody was gonna move a boat, they would have to drive on the other person's property to get the boat into that garage. So that's my opinion, and I am all for the shed staying there. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Duka made his call.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, I agree. I think that if they want to resolve it, they have a way to resolve it, then they should take it beyond us.
Is he in this or am I? He just said he's in.
Matt number Z eighteen fifty-three, Genesis Hopton for appeal decision to directory special services, the client was in Zonex Orleans. In the, on the premises number 155 Babcock Street, I make a motion to decline the appeal.
On the motion, standing in all favor?
Aye.
Close. Someone. Further on to tonight's business, case number Z eighteen fifty-four, Davis Thomas Architect, variance finding to remove the existing structure and rebuild the same footprint, premise 143 Bayside. The absentee representative is here. 143 Bayside.
Joel. Hey, boy. Joel is our real. I bought the property at 143 Bayside and I think to tear it down and just develop new, uh, structure there.
What are you doing?
Same thing. Let's see it. I have my, uh, shot, uh, builder playing a little bit to you.
My name's Sean Power. I'm a builder. Um, we're all for what Joel is planning to build.
You the builder?
Uh, not quite just yet, but maybe.
So I, I don't know if you're up here as his builder or being in favor.
I'm in favor.
I will let you speak when it's your turn, if not right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
How many floors? How many bedrooms? How many bathrooms?
Four bedroom, um, probably three bathrooms there.
Probably?
Well, I mean, I really, I'm really not into it. We have the architect and the builder, it's, uh, Sean, if you've got some plans. No, I don't.
Are you gonna live?
Oh, yes. Yes, I am.
You don't know if you're gonna have three...
Oh, no, no, I don't. But I mean, I don't know exactly the size and all that. It's gonna be a four-bedroom. It's gonna be an elevator, but it's gonna be, uh, outside generator.
But you get, you get your one floor underneath the garage, right?
Right.
What are you doing with all these, uh, all these domes up there? Just two of them? What do you got in there?
I'm gonna raise the first floor up there.
But, no, no, no. You already raised the first floor, you raised the second floor, and you put something on the third floor. You're putting domes on the third floor, correct?
Right.
Why? You already got the garage, you already got some floors. How big are your domes? You don't know?
I don't. I'd be lying here if I tell you.
He's right in the house, right?
Uh, Dave Thomas, the architect.
Any questions, the applicant?
Yeah, why does Dave Thomas not give to?
Right.
Why does he not give?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm a, uh, builder, uh, I thought he could help or something.
Is he a builder or he's...
No, he's a builder. No, he's a builder.
Does he know what's on these claims?
Yes.
So he's a builder now, okay.
Yes.
Bring him up.
Fine.
Shake his hand, you got a bond, friend.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Are we understood that Dave Thomas was supposed to hear the advice and he was gonna explain it more as an architect?
What do you guys have to done up there?
It's just an undelivered space in the attic. It's more of a looks than actual living space. Living space, yes.
All right.
The elevator is for Joel, his bad knees. It's only used as small little kind of closet.
Does it bring him up to the, to the penthouse?
Fine.
So he can get on the deck?
His master's on the second floor.
But can he get up to the penthouse?
Probably not.
The elevator will do it.
Is it, that's what I'm saying, is the roof deck up there? You get to the roof deck.
It's a roof deck with an unfinished attic.
No, 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 but he's got, he's got a deck up there. Like, he can sit out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So he can't get up there.
Always on stairs.
Now you're gonna, he only gets the deck.
There'll be stairs on the deck.
I don't know, I don't know what this guy is. Not getting up to the third floor, he's hanging most.
They're more supposed to hear it more than it's...
Right, so I see exactly where you're going. Any questions?
What's the height of this?
Yeah, I'll call.
It'd be under a hundred seventy feet.
Gotta be on the thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet, yeah.
There you go.
Make sure I know.
It's done. It's approved. It's done. Any questions, the applicant? Anyone down there?
Do you have a neighbor, do you know, does his counselor offer any input?
We have a couple of neighbors that are here that are...
They're just wondering if you have any input or anything with that.
You have contracts with them?
No. Just trying to, you know...
Not to hang in out all night or take them all or nothing?
Right, yeah.
Well, we'll do something after this. Yeah, we'll do something after. We're just trying to make...
We need to talk to your building. You got thirty-eight feet of reach in this one here.
That's what I was saying.
Well, we're just trying to keep it the same as the other houses around.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, but, yeah.
All right, what are you gonna do up there? Whatever you gotta do?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little...
Make that?
Yeah.
I guess you never see. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor? Thank you.
Orange view, 129 Bayside. I just know Joel's the neighbor. I was saying my parents, children, trying to always be an asset to the neighborhood. I haven't looked at the plans either, but I'm sure it's gonna be tall enough.
It's all the job over there.
Anyone else want to speak in favor? You said you brought your names?
Well, I got the face.
Well, I'm his wife.
Don't be scared.
And I agree. We have no problem with it. Our house is the same height, three stories.
Name and address?
129 Bayside.
Name.
Ian, sorry.
Ian what?
Use.
Okay. Thank you. So anyone else wants to speak in favor? The last part of the hearing closed. I gotta let you hear from the DPW. Review the above referenced projects and comments are as follows. Would there be any parking or paved proposed? Is there any changes of grade upon completion of this project? Has to go plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bonds, benchmarks, defined toll site facilities right away need to be submitted along with the annual file. Instead of go plans, shall we stamp the sign by, by the line? For anyone opposed or on the side? Opposed or on the side, first call, second call, third call, pause. It's pretty healthy, it's a doing five feet. If you can't, you're gonna have to come back again.
Yeah. Mr. Duka, what issue with building footprints other than three feet, right?
Okay. As long as we put it in.
All right. Is the chairman Matt number Z eighteen dash fifty-four, Dave Thomas for architect for a variance finding to remove the existing structure and rebuild the same footprint on the premises number 143 Bayside Road, they close the gray variance with stipulation that the house should be any higher than thirty-five feet.
Second.
Okay.
Motion, standing in all favor?
Aye.
Close. Someone. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Further on to tonight's agenda, Z eighteen fifty-five, Brian Burke, trustee, the variance for legalizing this design to the premises number 6947 on Washington Street. Can I ask you their representative, Ken? Can we take it outside, please?
Sorry.
My name's Brian Burke. Builder for forty years. I do development and building. And we flipped in Quincy on Hancock Street years ago, and the last project we did here was Tulio's Restaurant on the bridge at North Benzey. We've been building out in Newton in North East City. We've recently picked up lots down in Hingham and we're gonna build it on the South Shore. We wanted a field office down this area and we like to do more business in Quincy. This property here came up and we've driven by it, you know, for forty years. And it's a great location, easy access point, and it has a great visibility. Now the bridge construction is all on the road, it's done. It looks pretty good there. We, uh, Mr. Duka from the building department explained to us that we pulled permits for the new frontage, new siding, new windows and a new roof. And then someone noticed that it had been an abandoned property and we had to apply for a finding. So we did that, applied for the finding. And then, not for the finding to go through, we had removed a violation that's on the signage. And then we, we made a search of all the records and it took us quite a while to find, but we were able to find that the assessment from nineteen, and I include copies of that dated, the assessment from quite a while ago was for billboard on the site. And then I found, I couldn't find it at the fire department, the welding records when it was welded, and it was done by C.I. Brink for the owners of Quincy, Quincy, uh, many, many years ago. But I did find references to the sign and I included that as well for, in nineteen, I think it was, uh, nineteen sixty-eight, where they had a billboard and they actually had a second sign of the property, which is the horizontal sign on the left-hand side. I met with the, I spoke with the city council a few times, and I looked at immediate neighbors. Please, that passes up to them. The immediate butters signs petition for me. I have copies of them. They're on top. So I have the, the neighbors directly behind me, the other one behind me, the ones to the left of me, the ones to the right of me, and the beige truck. And then up the street one, the one across the street. The neighbors have been very supportive. They, they glad the place is done. On the right-hand side, if you look at the lot, we've put a cobblestone curb up that right-hand side. We're gonna put a row of ivy by the up that side to block out Mr. Brown's property. And then behind us on the left-hand side, there's already a good-sized oak on the corner, and we're gonna add some other mid-level pine, like range or something. The, we bought the building, we loved it. We think the sign's iconic. We think it's beautiful, like a mountain bridge. I like it. I restored old properties. I restored things like the Angel Diner and the Gosh's Party Works.
Yeah, yeah, beautiful.
Yeah. I've done a lot of projects and I like this. And as a site, if you go inside the room, you can look through the glass windows. There's only two built-in desks that were made out of mahogany by some. And just for us to hit the internet, review the plans, can take off for the day. So it has low usage and we just wanna be, we be seeing them. The council had mentioned to me, he says, if they wanna see what you have for signage, whatever, it's not company style realty. And basically, it's, it's a forest grain with gold styrene and white letters. And then, once a year or twice a year, we have a vintage flag, that's a flag from eighteen ninety-six. We like to fly it on, in the front of the billboard for the Fourth of July and Veterans Day. So we did it this year. You know, and they told us, don't be doing that until you have it legal. But we're, we get involved in the community, we'll back whatever projects that they need to do. We're good landlords, we'll keep the place orderly and clean, and we'll make it welcome when you come into the city from the bridge. In Belmont, we did over Belmont Center, we did the...
I'm sorry, it looks nice, Quincy.
Yeah.
And let's stick with Quincy.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, during, during the wintertime, we do a nice sculpture in front of our building. We would like to do the same here if you're good.
Here's my thing. If you were Quincy flowers, I have a tough time picking that sign. But you know, because it's been there so long. But billboards, all the billboards on that street, as you know, it's a long one, there were billboards and billboards all down Washington Street. Hundreds of them. In time, this convoy, no one, it's good to come in all place, see a sign and pull in, fine. But to have a big banner coming into Quincy, that's we're gonna see. Construction company, not my flag, so. My thing is to get rid of those bigger signs, clean up the neighborhood, make it look pretty. You have a right to a standing sign, you have a right to a sign on your building, and that's what I feel should be done. I think all the big signs should be gone. That's my opinion. So I don't have any questions, but, you know, I'll be interested.
I do. Billboards provided the control of the state, outdoor advertising board, and there's been a lot of controversy in the city of Quincy of billboard that was permitted by the, by the state. This again, I don't know the definition between a billboard and onsite sign. And I wouldn't agree to this in the situation until I had clarification, if that was the case. Because billboards have to be permitted, they have to be assigned numbers, and the state is armed on that bridge there, so I'm sure that they may have something to say about whatever control they belong to, they present over. That's all I got.
The, to address that.
What?
I have a real question. I'm not sure.
Fine.
I have no question.
So you wanna finish that up?
Yeah. To address that, the on-premise sign is not used for advertising. Can't be used for advertising. The one we use for the company that's in the billboard. And right now, by rights, we're entitled to one-third of that sign, you know, to that frontage for that building. The, uh, the on-used premise sign is allowed if it was permitted in the past, so the use has continued. And that has been continued. And it's been not abandoned because it's been, taxes paid on the billboard for, you know, forty years.
But again, you're calling it a billboard. And the billboard now, I think, falls under the pravance of the outdoor advertising board for that, that's connected to the highway.
Yeah.
And because it's called a billboard, it may be required to be licensed as a billboard.
They, they do that if you're, if you're selling the sign. If you're not selling the sign, it's an onsite sign. And that's what we're applying for, is onsite sign. And we're not looking to present any of that else.
You're not, but the guy that comes out, you're not.
Yeah, you can't, it's not permitted.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's only permitted for whoever's using the building.
But again, it's, it's, the references that I see here, I don't, I'm gonna go back and forward you, but the references that I see here call a billboard. And a billboard to me is a, is a non-issue. It, it wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? In favor, first call, second call, third call? Mr. Duka?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a point of clarification. The sign has been there, it's been in violation for many years. It's also been abandoned and discontinued. It's been advertised for other purposes, port three oh five. We've had several violations of the sign. So it's lost its vested rights because it's been discontinued for two years. It's Quincy flowers, they've been out of there. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Duka. I have a letter here from the DPW. Review the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or on the side? Opposed or on the side?
I just have a quick question.
To the statement there?
John Road Trail sixty-two Grand Mall Road, um, those other two signs that say, like, port one oh three and something else, are those what we're talking about here too? what we're talking about here, too?
No, we're talking about Quincy flowers. The sign over his business.
So, the one that says Quim Flowers?
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's important to make sure that that doesn't become a billboard, you know, because the worst thing, you know, I don't want people driving into the city of Quincy and seeing a, a WeMap sign or a Leachy sign right there.
Big pipe coming up?
Well, they're gonna get that one from Washington Street coming the other way and stuff, but, but, you know, it would be...
Exactly what I said today.
You know, but it's, um...
Exactly what I said today myself. It's a picture someone else bought.
It's, you know, I, I think when you go around that curve, actually, today, at the license board meeting, we just approved to make that gas station right up the street from that to be able to, to sell food. So, um, you know, I'm not saying what they have to do with it or anything, but... I, I wasn't in favor of that one earlier, so because, you know...
Shut that camera off.
It, it's about, basically, like I said, if that area is important, I actually think, you know, building that, um, storage place across the street there, I don't think we're going in the right direction there. So, if we can do anything to help clean up that area and make it look a little bit better, then, um, you know, do it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Before, I, I want to go back here. I have, I have this, I didn't put in the records, on the board of appeals, we have fallen about a six ninety-four, seven hundred Washington Street. Wendy Mass would like to register in support of the Burke family in their effort to legalize the existing building, lot, and signage for on-premise. And there's seven signatures here from eighty-one thirty, eighty-one eighty-three, Wittenham, eighty-five Wittenham, seven oh three Washington, thirteen D, uh, six ninety-two Washington, and...
Twenty-eight.
Is there anyone else opposed or on the side? All probably getting opposed. I just think it's time that they get abandoned to get rid of them. I think every business has a right to signage, a right sign. And I think that'll look nice, nice sign, enlightened sign coming down, it'll look nice and all classy on the buildings, so I'm gonna be voting not to view him that side.
What we, uh, don't understand is, the property has been ripped up very nicely. Why would you want the name of someone else that's on business to confuse people?
He's just built, he's just finishing that up.
I know, but I'm saying, but...
Well, he can't put it, he can't do nothing with it.
He couldn't change it. That was what he was gonna change it to.
Really?
He can't put his up. That's the sign that was there.
Yeah.
He can't touch it until it's either legalized or taken down. He can't put nothing.
Well, I know, I must say, I mean, he could put something in the window or something, but it's just, it's just confusing, man.
I don't know. I was trying to get flowers today, didn't have them.
They have their flowers, they, they have buildings and stuff. So, I, I'm opposed to this.
Yeah, obviously, with the billboard connotation, I'm putting it right here.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, Madam number Z eighteen dash fifty-five, Brian Burke, trying to legalize the existing signage on the premises number six ninety-four, seven hundred Washington Street, I make a motion to deny the variance.
Second.
On the motion? Stand in and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Someone? Michael Carter, Z eighteen fifty-five. Michael Carter, for variance, special permit floodplain to raise the dwelling three feet above the floodplain on the premises number five, Post Island Road.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Reverend, Mr. of the Board. My name is Brian LaRoche, uh, the architect for the applicant, Mike Carter. Uh, live at sixty-seven Mirzab in Quincy. The property before you is, uh, pretty straightforward. It's probably the easiest case I've ever been before you on. Mike and Cindy were flooded out in the large storm, uh, and they had about six inches of water in their house. Uh, they would've kept their property for nearly fifty years, is it? Or thirty-one?
Thirty-one. Will be fifty when we're done, right? Sixty-eight in the neighborhood. There you go.
So, um, you know, they want to stay, obviously, they love the area, they have a really nice home, uh, but they, they need to flood-proof their home. So, what we're planning on doing is retaining the existing foundation and adding on to it to elevate their home. And our plan is to get a full three feet above the current floodplain, uh, fourteen feet. So, we'll get their first floor up, uh, three feet above that, which means it's about a six-and-a-half-foot lift from where it is now, although up in the air. So, the only other thing that we're gonna be doing to the property is just reconstructing a deck at the front and a set of stairs to go up to it, and then, in the back, a set of stairs. Because the house is so low to the ground, obviously, the staircases are gonna be more substantial than they were. But the deck at the front is largely gonna be as it was, higher. Uh, in the rear, we are gonna make it a little bit bigger just to give them a place to put a grill now that they're up so high. Uh, and then, the stair will wrap tightly to the house and around to the front. So, it's pretty straightforward. We're not doing anything to change anything on the living area, we're not putting anything constructed on the dwelling itself. So, when it's finished, it'll be thirty...
No change on the inside, and that's it, correct?
Uh, no, uh, other than restoring finishes. What they had to do is gut the whole interior because of the driveway was wet. So, alls they're doing is putting it back as it was. There's no, uh, no changes or alterations.
What are you doing on the side? What are you digging up around the house in there?
We're not digging the, uh, existing building.
No, they're digging around the foundation. What are they doing down there?